I would like to reiterate this to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republican Party for which it stands, one issue under our individual liberty and justice law.
Before we start, I would just like to let you know we have two members of the board. We've got David Shohar over here and Don Wester at the other end, so be careful of that.
Oh, thank you.
So, all right, um, so, uh, we'll take a look at our minutes from the last meeting, uh, for those that are here.
I'll make a motion approve.
Okay, Wilson made my risk, Stefan by Judy, all in favor?
Aye.
Both? All right, both who carries the minutes from February twelfth, twenty twenty-four are approved. Okay, next item on our agenda is Gotar LLC at, um, this is a up for a possible decision. Um, on the site plan is seventy seventy-eight East Genesee Street, April, New York, one three zero six six. X map number zero nine two point dash zero one dash zero five point zero. Um, and we have.
Hi, good evening, um, Mike Fogel, I'm the attorney for the applicant. Also with me tonight is Scott Freeman from Keppler Freeman. So first of all, appreciate the opportunity to appear tonight in front of the board to continue to discuss the project. I think we're close, we really, obviously we wanted the opportunity to, um, discuss any remaining issues and just, I think, point out certain things that we just want to make sure that, uh, the board was aware of from our submission, so. I think first and foremost, you know, we, we, we think we addressed, um, the comment relating from during the public hearing relating to the screening. Um, we, obviously we took that comment seriously. Uh, we reviewed it with, uh, my client and Keppler Freeman, who obviously, you know, is in the business of, uh, you know, landscape design. So they, they reviewed what the concern and comment was and came up with a proposed planning and screening plan that we think addresses the concern that was raised at the public hearing.
Okay, and before we go on, um, I, I was able to reach out to the neighbors that are at the address that you're, you're addressing. Um, and so their hearing's thanks to, we had advised that, you know, a quick discussion with them just to make sure, um, that that's something, especially the trees that would be right adjacent to their property line.
Yeah.
Um, that that was something that would work for them, just in case they didn't want any screen, they wanted to keep.
Right, yeah, I mean.
Anything like that, so they are here.
Online.
Yeah, we're in.
Scott, can you still come show them real quick here?
Well, sure, and you know, we have our two board members, two board members, so we wouldn't mind seeing what your board.
Yeah, we've done, yeah.
Yeah, when I'm coming up here, I have my do it last.
When you stop for a minute, is this different from the submission?
No, absolutely no.
It's exactly the same.
Identical.
Okay.
Yes, I know what you're, yeah, that's not good, we're not doing that.
Do it.
Keep talking. So this is the existing conditions plan, I'll show everybody that again, what that looks like. These are the existing, everybody there, their, the plans aren't big enough to show the residents, but we were going with six, uh, six foot height evergreens to, to go in kind of what's there now, so. There was all kinds of different plant materials, is there, are you in agreement with that?
Is that the same kind of, they're already like the same?
Yeah, they're gonna be like, the ones that are there are probably a little taller.
Yeah, they probably grow like about a foot, foot a year.
And you don't, you don't plant them like right next to each other, one would be here, one would be here. You know, six four, be like right about there, and in four, five years, they'll start to, they'll start to fill in. And the design intent, um, Aaron was.
Actually, it's not mistakes what's shown, because.
That is not the plan, that is not the plan they showed.
There's two gaps shown barely are filling in, only one of them is shown filled in on the.
This was submitted, this is February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-four.
Yeah, but it's not, I've got it up, I pulled it up on, off the website, because we didn't get these drawings and paper copies. We got a notice in our email, but we didn't get them in town.
All right, don't look at those. Can you go back to that drawing, because it was right on.
Yeah, that's the same one that I have, it's the whole we all have.
Yeah, use the one that, no, I don't see, I think it's the same one, but probably.
It doesn't have to say you.
Okay, we'll go off the screen.
It might not be a big difference, but it's that, are you on L two point, are you on L two point oh?
Right, that's what I was wanting to do right there.
Yeah, well, that's a little bit, so, yeah. So on the one you've got, it's two.
So this is, this is the digital version, but I showed you.
I think it might show that one.
The other thing.
I think it's showing this, maybe everything that's been, like, timbered.
Yeah, I showed it, it's on several different plants. But anyway, are you, so six foot everybody, up that tall, we.
Yeah, the, the, the one, the one thing from our perspective is, we have a garden right there that grows along that fence. We don't, we don't necessarily want the trees right.
Oh, I, I know what you're saying, we could, we could offset, then what I would recommend is moving in maybe at least five or six feet so we can get a mower behind it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't want to, yeah, they're still on, they're still on.
So far as property, yeah, yeah, it's on the property line, I would put it here. So Michael, get us a mower behind it, I wouldn't want to, I don't want to over molt it and have two. I want to show them the one other ones by the garage that went to the truck.
Yeah.
You don't mind scrolling that down. So really the design intent is we'll catch the headlights, you have a vehicle, a lot of, a lot of leaves. The headlights are gonna be here, you know, per my discussion there a month ago. We didn't want to just create a, a wall of plants, everyone wanted to hear where the headlights are going. So headlights hit these evergreens, and then there's a gap where we hit your house, now we're shutting that gap. And the other place we had some wider evergreens was over there, because when you're leaving, like, when those parking spaces turn, their spaces on, they'll be, those are, those are Norway spruce, which are a little wider again.
And they're gonna be six feet high.
Six feet tall, they grow about twelve, eighteen inches a year. And we're actually gonna take, uh, some of the asphalt from onsite and build it up on a little berm, put some topsoil on it. So the trees themselves will be six feet, but they'll be up probably around eight, eight or nine feet, a little berm.
Yeah, I, I hate to interrupt. This is the planning board that makes the decisions.
Okay.
Homeowners, don't make this, talk to us, please.
Okay.
So three evergreens next to the garage, the design intent was when people in the parking lot or those parking spaces, they turn on their headlights, it'll hit those evergreens, they're three six foot Norway spruce, they grow.
Well, please, please don't put them on top of a buried pile of asphalt.
Okay, it's all topsoil, there's, there's no.
It's not gonna be topsoil, but.
We do it all the time, but I'm not gonna agree with you, what we're, it's, what we do is we put it in the lower level and there's soil, there's two foot of soil on top of some of the sploes. If you want to know that the asphalt's leaving, we'll do that, let's not get hung up on that. It'll be evergreens, northern Christmas trees, they're, they're more pyramidal, it'll be, it'll be six foot high. Three of them on top of some topsoil. That's the planting that we have on.
Yeah, I just wanted to read the ones that were closest to their.
Yeah, I just, I just.
You know, they're.
We're, we're good with the proposed.
The five feet back.
Five feet back from our property.
So the question is, you have, when you held up the board.
So, so they're gonna move, do they, they're gonna, the group of ten is gonna move back on that?
Five of them back.
Five feet back, yeah.
Is there a second group?
There's the group along the fence, and then there's three that.
Mine equals in the scale bar on the drawing, no, those are their, their existing.
We have two sets of each.
That's already one there, no, those are existing, yeah.
Longer fence, I'm withdrawing L two point zero. I don't care, it's twelve, there weren't several ones. And that's either number eleven in the layout construction note, it says there's twelve, ten are showing. And to either side of those, a whole series of pink circles, what are those?
Those are the existing ones.
So you're filling in between existing ones?
Yeah, yeah. Correct.
So is it ten or twelve, I guess?
We're gonna make it twelve.
Okay.
This way there'll be some overlap. So.
Yeah, yeah.
Five foot, twelve.
Six foot, six foot, five feet back from the property.
Five foot of property, twelve. No topsoil, no asphalt there.
Would you ask the landowners if deer are normally present?
Yeah, we don't, we don't get any deer on our property.
We do deer, they usually hang out in that wood.
No, they, they do like everybody, the, the green giant or Aaron will attest to this, they're, they're less likely to, this is secondary, so.
Yeah, so question is, should we just have to consider if, like, because they're on, uh, the Gotar property, if they're highly impacted, I think someone mentioned this, that deer love them or whatever, is that something that Gotar is responsible for, or we feel like there's an issue, can we go straight to Gotar? And we have to come back to set of planning now?
No, I mean, if they're on like, they're on the Gotar property, they're his responsibility, and yeah, I mean, I would encourage you to have, you know.
Michael, you know, Michael wants to, he has a lot of time, effort, money into making this look good. But what a landscaper would do, you know, Michael's not gonna be out there, he's gonna be doing what a lawyer does, they would wrap them in burlap. That's what they would do.
Oh, sorry.
No, that's okay, I think that, that was really good discussion, so, okay, so it seems like we, addressed that comment. We did remove that building sign from the building, so that's just not part of the package anymore. I think the, the last issue really is the signage that we're proposing at, at the property. Um, if you recall from the.
Can I go for some low hanging fruit?
Yeah.
Okay, um, the, the, the details that, um, on the gate, um, that's, I think there were a couple things. Details on the gate, um, the lighting specs.
Oh, you're on the checklist.
I, I just, well, I'm just trying to, like, the regular signs on the hard part, I just wanted to get some of the low hanging.
Yeah, okay, we can leave that, yeah, sure. So which one do you?
Well, I, I guess I, I, I was looking at word.
Let's, let's start with the gate.
That's my idea, that's.
Yeah, let's start with the gate, the gate has a picture, but yet I've heard you're not gonna do the gate.
Yeah, I was gonna get to.
Take it off the plans.
I was gonna get to that.
Take off the plans.
So the gate, the gate's just gonna come off. And we heard the comments and in talking to the client, they've decided to just remove the gate from the plan.
Okay.
So I think that addresses that comment.
And then the, the two, the, uh, sign on the building and the monument sign that has an X in it.
Yes, so that was meant to indicate that those were just coming off, so we were just trying to show that they were coming off with the X. The sign on the buildings is, and it's in the narrative, but the sign on the buildings off.
I think Aaron was in there, take it off the plans.
Okay, we'll take it off the plans. And the one monument sign at the entrance, we are proposing to remove and replace with the two smaller directional signs that would frame the driveway. We think that that's a good compromise, um, they meet the code requirement for each four square feet, they're gonna sit on spaces and the brick is gonna match the brick on the house, that's important to Mike, to have that consistency between the, the signage. And we thought that that was a good compromise, we know at the earlier meetings, there was discussion about, um, wanting those to be more directional in nature. So we think they're nice, they're gonna frame the driveway, um, they're gonna ensure that people traveling to the office can find the entrance, whether they're coming east or west, and that'll help avoid any unnecessary turnarounds on Draycott or, or elsewhere if they miss the property. The other reason we, we really do want the two directional signs is because, you know, we are pulling those signs, obviously, out of the DOT right of way, they're gonna be more setback, um, perhaps not as visible as some of the other signs along Genesee Street that are somehow in the right of way. So that was another basis for why we thought having the two directional signs, um, would be appropriate. So I, I, obviously we did see the comment from the board from the workshop meeting, um, indicating the preference for one directional sign, but in talking to the client, he does, what, didn't want me to reiterate the request for the two signs and, and the basis for why we, why we think those
Okay.
are appropriate.
Yeah, I think if, if a gate is being removed, it might make more sense now for the two directional signs. Then they're gonna want to just even it out and kind of give that impression of an entrance.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I did want to have the board discuss the directional signs and the number of them and what's on them, so if you.
Driving that road in evening, unless it's really well lit, trying to find a certain driveway, it'd be problematic. I think it's very good idea to frame your driveway, have a directional sign on either side. Especially with the proximity of these, I thrive.
Right, we want.
Somebody really unfamiliar to the area can be disconcerting to be on that road with that little.
Yeah, and that was one of the, I think, reasons for it was kind of the early concerns that were expressed about, you know, people inadvertently turning on the Draycott, we want to avoid that, we want them coming to the office, so.
Plus they speed down that road too, you know, so at least they have an idea for the signs.
Right, that was the thought.
And, and also, if you guys are trying to look at the, I'm looking at the directional signs, directional one and two plans, um, what we think as far as what should be on them, the, the name of the law firm, the address, enter, like, are they gonna be in this?
They're gonna be LED illuminated, yes.
From the ground up?
No, within the sign, the backflip.
So with the signs, I guess, I, I personally, I still think one is a click. I think that sometimes the more signage you introduce, it demonstrates its impact. Um, there's a lot of signs already going on here, I'm not, I think that it could be kind of distracting to see more than one, personally. But what seems to be, um, more important to me for people who know where they're going is one thing, right? People who've never been are also looking for the number. And I think that it would be important to have both sides of the sign be the same thing, if you were to have one sign. And on the sign drawings that were submitted, a bunch of the line work is missing, so I don't, I don't think it's just like showing up on my computer screen or not, but, um, a lot of the line work is missing, so we can't actually see the outlines of the sign. But there might be a way to put the enter and the number on the same sign. And if you had one, it would have the same information on both sides. Because otherwise your eye is looking like, here's the number, here's the name, like, it can be a, a little bit confusing when there's a lot going on. And you want not need to have the complex in your attorney's project, like, you could make it a little, it is just an exit sign. It's not the business advertising sign, which is, you know, previously, you know, for those people that are going east. We would want to see, I would want to see the whole design of those signs, not just the graphic, um. And with the lighting, you know, this kind of goes to all signs, there was a bunch of discrepancies on the sign details. Is it, where are we gonna mention?
Foundations.
Uh, well, the foundations, I mean, but the brick size, the total height, the cap material, is it, um, gonna be the bluestone, is it gonna be flash, the flashing is the length of several bricks? On one of the details, there was something like hanging out on the left, the sheet, and I wasn't sure what it was.
I just, I can answer that, unfortunately, they're not complete, because we felt like this conversation wasn't complete. Once this conversation is complete, we don't, we don't have a problem. Final detailing, we did have a couple of notes on there, it could be flash, the Alexander sign is actual next to Dunkin' Donuts, right up Collin Road. And it does have the flashing on the side, it looks quite nice, and it is three bricks down. And yet, so that's option one, the other option is with the bluestone coating, I'm not sure. Michael had a discussion with the sign manufacturer, they, they had a, they agreed to disagree, they, they didn't have a final direction on it, but what Michael wanted to know is what kind of sign can he get there, so. So we appreciate the feedback, we'll clean it up, I think now we're down to text and we will, we will come back with.
I agree.
Your line.
We'll test it again.
Well, I think the other, the other question, just so everybody's on the same page, can you just explain, because what I'm thinking in seeing the, the drawing on the site plan and then our graphic here, that you have up, the end view, that's facing north and south, and then the text is east and west, correct?
The, the signs would be perpendicular, I believe, let me just check on the site plan.
The monument sign and the directional signs are different?
Yeah, I've got the directional right now, yeah.
Yeah, this, this would be per, so this is the road, that would be perpendicular, this would be facing the road. That, when you're driving down the road at a distance, you would see, you would see this and this, that's perpendicular to the road.
That's going east and west along Route five, and then end capture.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and, and I know, Aaron, you prefer one sign, I'm, I'm just, this is like, what my client said to me. It's a busy road, and I drove into that driveway night to see what the light impacts would be on the neighbors. I went there, actually, one day when there was snow, two months ago. And there was snow in the front, and if, if it's not plowed, you can't, you don't know where to go. And I guess Michael's point was, having two signs kind of gives you a target. I understand what you're saying about having too much on the signs, but if we thinned out the text on the sign, we would really like the board to consider having two signs, I don't know if that's, I'm just, that's where Michael, our client is coming from, and I just.
I can see the argument for it, and that's just my opinion. Are you getting rid of the turnaround, if you're getting rid of the gate?
Yeah, turnaround was only there because of the gate, so they're both being removed.
Is it just a really quick question, what is OSEA? It's not, it's not a thing.
Um, I'm aware.
We, we can, I can ask you later.
Yep, yep, okay.
You don't have to cover your head. There were some sections and stuff on the ramp that were kind of pointing the wrong way, and I think it was just that the, um, country line labels are not.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna finish.
So you're setting all that up?
Yeah, yes.
Image sign stuff with an image press or a C, directional signage, um, cabinet colors. I drove by there today, and there's quite a few trees actually over near the entrance.
Aaron, sorry, wait, let's, let's do one, before you want to go.
That was the sign.
Okay.
If there's trees under the entrance, they're here on the signs.
Let's finish the directional sign, I just wanted to kind of get a consensus from the board as far as what we're thinking, one, for two directional signs and what we're thinking, so that they have some direction to go. No, I'm intended to just, um, so and what, and what's on the signs? So I know Don's mentioned here, they were two, already two, I'm two, two.
I want to see how they lay out on the property.
Okay.
And I want to see the colors, this is one of the problems, they, they don't tell us what the color is gonna be to be determined, tell us now.
You'll come back.
Yes, I mean, I mean.
I know you said the brick is gonna match with the brick of the building.
Yeah.
Yes, the.
We know that.
The sign manufacturer, Michael, when our client went to the sign manufacturer separate from us, so, so Mike was doing the best job he can to bring it all together, so you guys are a little frustrated because you don't have everything. And Michael, you know, our client doesn't fully understand this process, so the answers you're giving us today will, will enable us to finish it. But the last meeting and the meeting before, we didn't have enough information to finish it, so I think we're, your comments are, are well taken, and we'll go to the, to the sign manufacturer, so you have to match our plan, and you have to pick one material, it can't be flash and bluestone, and the, the text, the number of signs. Um, hopefully we get two, and then the, the text on the sign, uh, that would be nice to know what you'd be willing to give us on that.
And I'd like to see where they're gonna be placed, what, you know, we're gonna see from, you know, a directional.
Okay, we can.
Because right now I have no clue where these are. They don't mark them on the draw.
Yeah, they're marked on the draw, I, I mean, they're right next to the driveway, they're on the client's property, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
They're on the layout plan and they're beyond.
I'm gonna want to see when I drive out, I want to know when I see when I come in, when I'm driving down Route five, I want to understand it.
I guess, I guess you want to, you want to, I can take an existing photo and then superimpose that on, so that's, that's what he's asking. Now, a planned view, a, a three D view can do that.
And I think, I think in my, my view, the simpler the better. You know, again, especially because it's providing direction, so the simpler the better, and, um, you've got the monument signs we talked about in a minute, um, but also kind of thinking, if you've got this, if they're directional signs, do we need the monument of the brick and then a separate sign, or can?
Well, I think he wants it to. He does want to look, make it look a certain way to match the historic nature of the house, so that's important, I think, not just a post driven into the ground. He wants that nice brick base to kind of accent.
I think what she was saying is, you know, like, a, a sign on top, or can the sign be integral to the brick?
So, I guess.
I don't know.
Uh, you're on this point, you're gonna have three signs, one to have an owner, one to have a name. It's gonna be confusing for everybody, you're going about the driveway and you're trying to make the driveway look where it is when there's snow or there's a flash, that's your point as well. But you don't have to put two signs, you can put one sign that has seven or seven eight on it, the name. And the other one is just a way to match it, so you can divide the driveway, you don't need two signs. You can put it all on one side of the information, it doesn't confuse you. And you got the other brick one, balance it out to show where the driveway.
Is that you?
We'd still like two signs, sorry, I don't want to go too much of a circle.
Well, the two signs is, is, let's say I'm going through your hall phone, I'm looking for the name and the number. I see the number, and I gotta try, oh, no, wait, the name is over there, maybe it's over on the other, the other side, that's what I'm saying. That's what's confusing, it's confusing whoever's coming to you for the first time.
Or I wonder like, Gotar Law, Sesame seventy-eight, is he meant or on the brick, something? The simpler the better, people are gonna be driving faster than they should be through there. And like I was saying, it's not shown on the drawing, there's a lot of trees that aren't shown on here, but you're live today, and this whole area leading up to where the driveway is full of trees, so.
Not to mention, it's, it's.
Will you, how will you see it?
It's, it's quite a distance off the road. You're not on the roadway, you're.
Right, I mean, everyone else somehow got their signs in the right of way and we, we're pulling them back, so we agree.
Too late, we're just too late, we just gotta do it.
I guess so. I mean, these signs are far better. This, we're trying to do things the right way, but we think these signs are far better than the other signs that are along Genesee Street, especially how they're lit and, and where they're located, um, so we, we like, the board also give some consideration to how this fits in with that corridor overall.
But we, I've been going down there, back and forth multiple times, but I think, yeah, everybody else has one sign, so now we've gone essentially three, so we're.
Well, this, this property also has the, you know, has a lot more frontage than any other property on Genesee Street.
Yeah, and I think, but with the driveway and the issues with Draycott and turnaround, that's why we're open to, just the one.
Right, no, understood, yeah.
Trying to keep it still simple and not confused, you know, not make it more confusing, but to actually be the help. I'm, so I'm kind of thinking, if you are gonna have to, either like what David said, where there's nothing on the second one, or it's the same. Just what Aaron was saying, just a little more, I want to give a number.
Not just common traffic, it is eastbound, traffic westbound, now it's across two lanes. If they have a turn, there's no traffic control, it says that they can't. What gives them the best part of the aim to cross two oncoming traffic lines? I think the sign on the other side of this driveway, so do you think it's clear as possible that it's distinct from Draycott Drive? Because if they misturn on the Draycott, they're gonna have to turn around and come back, you're updating the neighbors who live on Draycott. And bear in mind, what makes it as part of framework for cars coming both directions? I'm telling you, the ones that are westbound face this issue trying to cross the oncoming traffic.
It is a top left turn, especially during busy times, two lanes.
And there are a lot of businesses there that have the same problem.
I think it's just, it could be confusing, because this would be the only one having two, and then the fact that they say something different. It's more for your brain to process than the time that you have to do it. So, I think showing, taking a photograph from each side and manipulating the, um, sign in there will be extremely helpful. To maybe, you guys will come to a conclusion on one way or another about what you really, you know, try to reveal, especially when you look at the scale of the text on the sign versus where people are going to be able to read that in relation to speed.
I'm hearing that, I think, more, the majority of us are thinking the two, but I think we are all agreeing that it needs to be clearer and simplified.
Okay.
So if we can go with that.
Yeah, I mean, if we get a commitment, two signs where we can spend the time and energy with Cassis to really nail down and address the comments.
The idea of the double monument in the one sign is, I like kind of thinking that.
Has there been any discussions with the DOT to swap out current entrance with one near the parking, where the parking lot is?
Not at all, we didn't even want to open the door to that, and they did comment that they weren't gonna grant any different access point in one of the responses that we received from, um, I think the county. So no, I mean, we don't want to go down that road, we like where it is.
No, I'm just thinking, what, all these things with the, the monument signs, the entrance signs and so on, if you had, if you closed this off and put an entrance near. If you had, if you closed this off and put an entrance near the parking area.
We just think we're going to be with DOT for months and months and years. And we, we really would prefer to leave it where it is. I really think that's just going to create more issues. I appreciate the comments.
There is one thing that you've got to take a look at. This type of design, where you have one or two. You've got forty-eight inches is the height of the sign. Think of yourself leaving the driveway. And I would go to think a left or a right. Does the sign block your vision of the traffic as you're trying to think?
It's, well, it's, it's that pretty. I think it's, it's that now. Other than everybody else on, on the street would have that issue. But we're far back. And these are backlit signs. It's not a floodlight shooting.
Yeah, but it doesn't make you visual block.
Yeah, but the setback, it's pretty far back.
No, excuse me, where those signs came from? But I've been doing this work for six years and none of them work with this board.
No.
So, you know, but I, but I mean, it's been a long time. They're mostly old stuff.
I'm just saying, I went out there one night and the floodlights from those other lights were distracting. I think that's the biggest safety concern on that road is the uplighting on those other lights. Just throwing that out there.
Yeah, that's right.
Your eyes can't, once you look at that bright light, you can't unsee.
This would be setting a standard or something.
Yeah, not better.
So what made your code book is?
Not with an F James Alexander, but yeah.
Right.
Okay, so if we're, I'm going to just make sure we're addressing our comments from our engineering. It's in here, but I'm going to make sure we forgot this. So are we okay as a board not seeing this angle directly? This is going to be similar to the existing building?
Yes.
Do we go ahead of that? Okay. So we do want to see the mockups and the actual back lighting and the materials and the colors. Okay. I think we're okay with directional signs. We can move to the monument sign. And Erin, you have to.
Just in detailing, I mean, I think that it sounds like they're working out some stuff and showing the information that they have. I think the whole, just, you know, we replace the stuff you're taxing off the sheet with the same details for the directional signs, wash out the details.
Okay, absolutely.
Get stuff all over your little things that aren't right. And then, um, coatings and all that. And I think, you know, the usual stuff like materials, colors, lighting, all of that.
Okay, blue stone or?
Yeah.
Okay, understood.
I don't have any further questions on.
Okay. And the other thing is the lighting plan, same idea, put it in them.
Yeah, the lighting, you were a little confused by that comment. I wasn't sure what that was referring to because we're not changing any of the exterior lights on the site. Were you just talking about with respect to the signage?
I think it's because Doug had said this, the lighting, we'd like to see this on the large submission.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
That's what he meant, okay.
Yeah, like, yeah.
Oh, okay. Of course, you said everything's associated with that full size.
There's like a bunch hanging around, you know, yeah.
Oh, okay.
So if, if it wanted to approve it and that were signs of everything.
Yeah, I, I got that's fine.
And stuff like, yeah, codes and all that.
Okay, understood.
What are, what handle rules at a driveway entrance to a road this level? Because I looked at that for a matchup plan and it's almost down to zero. Is that good or bad for a road like this? An entrance for the entrance?
It's a driveway.
It's just a general.
We have the, with the like, with signs, so the directional.
Yeah, we have to check them out.
I don't know. Most driveways don't have pointing like that.
No, they don't.
They don't weigh much.
That's why I was curious. Because you don't usually see lights, like you could just see ones for that type of access. And I was curious, is it normal to leave it like this?
Like, like, like you guys just discussed, it's not a town road or a county road. That's, that's why we feel it's necessary to have the, the backlit sign. That's, that's kind of going to be the beacon, the, you know, the directional.
Because there will be business in the dark.
Well, actually, it's a lot of nine to five.
In the winter.
Yeah, no, you're right. The less, you know, fourth, you know, four block, five, yeah.
Okay, um, let's see. So I think we've got that. And then the monument sign, we just need to see the, what we talked about. And that's what we kind of mean by merging all comments off of the one granted noted as a site sand. Um, we talked about the screening. See, something, okay. I think that's everything. Um, does the board have any other questions or comments?
The perspective sign, the perspective drawings and go over the.
Yeah, we're going to add that. Mike's got that.
Yeah, we did. I think one or other question is, it appeared that the monument sign might be larger than the sixteen square feet requirement. Like the codes are just trying to.
Double check it.
We, we, there was a couple measurements missing on the drawings.
We'll make sure that's on there.
Calculate it, so.
It's a sign, it's not the base, but it's, yeah, it's the whole rectangle of the sign.
I think it's, I'm sure that's a whole. A whole, I can't remember.
The right base and the.
Oh, we have a double check, double check the code.
I disagree.
The base.
I, I agree with you.
But I didn't look at it.
Oh, the base, that's the sign.
Yeah. I think it, yeah, I think actually I don't like on that.
That, that's all. When we were, yeah, we could, there were some different measurements of it.
Oh, it.
Yeah, makes sense. We're just saying it kind of makes sense.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's everything.
Thanks, that was very good direction. This was great. Appreciate the intermediate review, but we're close.
Um, we can as a board go through a seeker. We haven't done it yet. And if David and Don might have taken you in, but we could go through it.
Can you give us the board numbers?
Yeah, we, we have.
So maybe go into the, um, let's say.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, um, the next, I don't have a chance. Is an initial presentation, um, by Doug Reed. And possibly the update of the current special use permit.
It should be a legend, but it's.
Uh, the tracer tech indoor driving range sixty-nine forty-six corners of Rhodey Syracuse, one three zero five seven. Tax map number zero four one point dash zero one, dash zero eight point one. And we have, we're very happy.
My name is Ed Reed. I'm engineer for, uh, Doug Reed. So I guess since it's initial, we'll probably just start right at the, right at the beginning and what we're planning on doing here. So, uh, the property is the, it's just north of the existing Winona Golf Course, uh, Shacks Corners Road. So if you're familiar with the property, the driving range just to the north of the clubhouse, at the northerly end of that existing driving range is where we are proposing the building. So it's an eighteen, a little over eighteen thousand square foot, two-story building with, uh, open driving ranges on both the top and bottom levels, which are going to hit out into the existing driving range. So in addition to that, there's also going to be a, uh, full bar and restaurant in the building too, which, um, even patrons who are not making in the driving range can enjoy the bar and the restaurant. So as far as the business goes, that's kind of the, the crux of it as far as the building goes. There's also talk about, and we just left a space reserved for because they haven't, haven't started the design, but also doing a outdoor mini golf. I think if there's any highlighted things, there's also they're proposing inside of the building, they will also have a banquet room as well as a mini golf course inside of the building.
So mini golf outside and inside.
Yeah.
When, when we looked at the plans originally, there's two parcels that are part of the golf course. The parcel you discussed, plus one that I think is south. That has the bulk of the golf course on it.
Yep.
And that has a special use permit, is that correct?
Yeah, so that's something else I was going to bring up tonight. I, I did talk with Lisa about this, about, um, logistically, when we do that, do we just lump? Do we bring all the discussions in tonight and sort of put a bow on the whole thing?
That's the idea is that we're going to have a special use permit. So it has to cover the whole golf course.
Right. Within my question early on was this being a separate parcel, would it be handled separately or can we do it all as one?
It's got to be all as one.
Okay.
Because it's really, um, it, it. I think the lots probably shouldn't be merged, but I think we can do them in two separate lots.
I mean, it doesn't matter. They both have to be done, so.
Right.
Part of the driving range crosses into the southern parcel, the landing area of the golf course.
Um, the left. I don't think so.
It's the other way around. There's golf, I know, yeah, certainly golf, using golf course on this parcel.
You're referring to the driving range associated with the golf course.
The new proposed building that is south, does it cross into the southern new patch parcel?
The other way around, yes, but just the other way around. So the existing driving range goes onto the northerly parcel.
Okay.
And with this application, what I'm going to answer hopefully in about ten seconds is whether or not the new driving range associated with this building extends into the southerly property.
Either way, it's a whole, either way.
Yeah, we just figured that, so.
Unitary of that.
Yeah.
The answer is no. So this application's driving range does not in fact project into that other property.
Having said that, I would be comfortable if we could first assume that we have one standing.
Agreed. And I think that that's what, that was the question. And I think we just answered it, that that's going to be the way to go.
They, they have one house that sits, I'm not sure where it's on. Yeah, is that rented? Is it? What's going on in that one house that's on the southern part of this park?
In that southwest corner?
Yeah.
It, it's a rental property.
Okay.
It was, uh, it's, I think it's around about one of the guys that worked at the golf course, the house there.
Yeah, so they, yeah, it's, I mean. So it's all, it's all part of.
It's all part of the, yeah.
I know we had said one thing is right about future, uh, the town of plans, the future.
Mini golf.
Mini golf.
Yeah.
That we don't usually.
We don't approve future.
I understand that. I just figured since it was being discussed, it came out in the open when we were discussing the project. Um, and they just haven't gotten anywhere with, with that. It's just space reserved for, yeah.
And we would review what you're proposing.
And then come back with a, understood.
Say you want to do.
It's your stormwater all designed for that too.
Yeah. So is the wastewater? So there's no, uh, public sewers out here?
Right.
So it's septic?
I see you've got that race field.
Yes, and that has been submitted just for preliminary review with.
Right, because it's a swampy area, it's septic, report it.
Uh, that's why it's a race system. Yes and no. We're going to make it work.
And I know you've been talking with Doug a little bit.
A little bit.
Doug Miller, and so you've got, you received his.
I did, yeah. I just didn't think it was worth getting into that too much, just.
Yeah, just to make sure you got them.
Yeah.
So have you pulled a what on that, while we were talking about that stuff?
We're outside of it.
It is just outside?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't look myself.
Yeah, I think you did.
From my perspective, from the initial presentation, it looks good. I mean, there's a lot of things that we have to go through to get from the end. But I think it makes sense.
Is there any similar facility in central New York? The dual double layer, double level?
There is nothing like that. Cleveland is closer to you.
Is Tracer Tech like a chain?
Tracer Tech's not a chain. We'll be using, um, uh, Trackman tracking stuff. That's not essentially a chain. It's used in different chains.
So it's different than like top golf.
It is different than top.
I think we were like wondering if there, if there's examples that you can show us of what they look like.
No, we don't, no. No, I created that mine. I mean, that's not my mind.
Oh. Um, yes, I.
I'm sorry?
What is it?
It is, um, it's, it's, uh, Tracer, Tracer Technology Driven Driving Range. So like to see with your PGA on Sunday, starting to stand the track or when you left golf with them tracker. That's done by Trackman. That's, that's the opposite order you use though, tracker or golf balls. So when people are hitting golf balls, there'll be TV screens and they can either A play games, they can play virtual courses, they can have driving range, which will tell them how far their ball went, how much spin was on the ball. Um, people to the PGA shows, and this is very high tech, cutting edge for the golf industry. It's, it's designed to bring younger people into the game. For the first time in twenty twenty-three, more people golf off course in facilities like this than they did on course. So we're trying to do this to drive, bring people to our golf course later on, you know, the younger people as they grow up.
You get them there.
If you get them there, it is for golf courses, golf percentage of the art of that.
So it's not just a driver, it's iron shots and.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's down to putting.
Yeah, it'll be heated base. It'll actually head out into the existing driving range from the backside in heated base. So you can go in winter time, uh, spring, summer, whenever, um.
How does that, it's open though?
It'll be open, but we'll have heaters on how.
Oh, I see.
I had to ask the same questions. And basically it's the heating elements are sized and designed in accordance with the area.
Yeah.
Where the people are going to be so that it provides enough heat even when you have a open, if you're playing.
Radiance, yeah. And the force there does not affect the metal floor. Uh, no, well, it's radius, we're going for air. But, yeah. We're going to get some real angles from behind it.
That's really, really interesting. Um, I have no idea about how that works. So thank you for bundling that into a little nutshell because it would have gone on a rabbit hole. Um, I have a few questions.
Sure.
How you want to handle it?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and this is mostly for you. I was starting with the, um, the EAF and, um, we actually do have a comprehensive plan now, which is new-ish to everything. I didn't look at the plan to see if it, how it fits with what you're proposing. But that, that's C two. Something you might want to.
Yeah, actually I did. Um, so just for the board to keep in mind, um, as our initiative from the town board and the town is to be working with a comprehensive plan now that we have it. And I know everybody has a copy of it and it's also on the website. If you, if you need a copy of it. But while we're looking, we've got the existing zoning of resurfaced agriculture. But the other thing to note is that there is the future land use projection for the town. And this is in the northern part of the town, northern thruway, up, um, towards the border of the town. And that, the future land use is listed as low density. Um, so with an existing outdoor golf course, I could see low density residential fitting in, but this would be quite a change, um, as far as structure, a large structure, more carving, banquet facility, restaurant, bar. So we should keep in mind, we may need to look further and investigate that further with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah.
So just so everybody's aware of that and we can keep that in mind. Go ahead, Erin.
That said, I'm not sure that this particular parcel would be suitable for residential sign.
Right. Right, I just don't know how that plays out for residential development all around.
Right, um, and that we keep an eye on that, but then it's a case by case basis, and, um, you know, I think that because there's an existing golf course, it's it's not good for a lot of stuff.
You're right.
Not to be.
It could be a healthy network, it probably would be, because it's just not.
Well, there's no septic.
Yeah.
And that's why the killer guns being, and, and, and the interest in the idea that there's not currently no public sewer source, you know, water, and so, um, that's what it, and if you look, if you look at the.
There is water.
Oh, sorry, I mean, public sewer, sorry.
Actually, golf courses have long been considered compatible with residential.
I think so, too.
Right, and I think the golf course, yeah, I guess what I'm saying is this larger structure and, um, the expansion of that, so.
Well, and that was one of the things that I had, that's actually later in the EAF, that I'm, I'm guessing to be some new order, picked up on twelve of the hours. Midnight, every day of the week.
Well, so, Mark, we'll just get into it. So one of the discussions that we were gonna open up at some point is obviously, that's gonna be, and I even aligned it in my letter of intent, was to open that up for discussion. Um, what I didn't wanna do, we have this happen in other municipalities with the commercial stuff, where even with the breweries and the wineries and stuff, where there's just gonna be little tasting rooms, right, and we're seeing what's happening with that. At the town level, if you're limiting the hours with that, the idea was not to come back in time and time again with the business froze, but to open that discussion up now and say, here's what similar businesses like that, how they're operating, you have the bar and restaurant in there as well. If you get a later crowd in there, you know, uh, they come in late, is that, is that feasible? So one of the things that we did discuss when we did the EAF and submitted, was show the more expansive hours,
Yeah.
and then depending on where everybody falls with that, throttle that back, but.
It's just something I think should be closely looked at, considering the residential nature, you know, you're right close by, and, um, I don't really know, um, example wise, what this type of facility, you know, it's new, right, so.
It's only around a little time, everybody's saying they don't want it.
Yeah.
Is there a proximity, I drove out there, I spent on the lot, I was aware of this midnight operation, I said, well, it's been like in January, and the lights are on. I look around, I said, I did not see really much that would be affected by that, in my direction, this sounds pretty invasive, but at the moment, I wasn't quite clear whose interest should be impacted by that.
Uh, I didn't look at that part of it when I visited this site, but some of our parents said three hundred and fifty feet was in interest.
Yeah, because we're considering the rental.
The rental is that one.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I don't have a, the opinion, I just.
If you have south, there are houses, if you have south, more houses, and the, maybe the traffic will be better, but nothing as far as.
Yeah, I'm not saying necessarily judging one or another, but at least, when I went out there, and I look, well, this is a pretty transformative, um, project out here, who might it disturb? And I may not have seen everything, so like, my first reaction was, hmm, not, it's not clear to me what other interests were impugned at the moment, but that's not a conclusion, I just started the initial game.
So, that, with the lighting, now we're talking, now that I know that it's the, um, the light, the tracer tech, does that mean that the driving range is not lit, because it's.
It is, there's a lighting plan in the submission.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah.
I've seen, um, go ahead, did you wanna?
Oh, no, I was just gonna ask if, but we can do it after, I'm just curious to hear more about the banquet facility and the bar and restaurant, like the capacity, the size.
I think the banquet facility, I think I'm using that a little too loosely, it's not a, it's more of like a birthday room, so if you have a, a youth birthday party that they wanna host, or, I'm, I'm more envisioning something like that, not a, not a banquet, yeah.
So it's not like a wedding reception, so. It wouldn't be a wedding type, so these aren't like corporate events and stuff like that.
The density of the town.
Yeah, it's not so much as a. On the initial design, we did have a private room, we turned that into the inside track, our golf course, the inside mini golf, the night open mini golf. And we're using, uh, the existing opening room, which is actually the, the box, more or less, for for the events, so they would be held in there, you know.
How, like, how many of you have, like, do you know, the, the capacity?
Yeah, that's a.
Do you have golf leagues?
We'll have a golf league.
Do you have current?
We do have the golf course, for, if this facility last year had a golf league as well, it could, uh, um, virtual.
Okay, no.
Yeah, we have existing bar and restaurant, hit the golf course, so they, they, they do that.
I see. Okay. Um, so, this is kind of a, a question with, um, how all this stuff goes together, but, so it's one of those questions, that you permitted or a lot by special or condition, and it said no. So I would speak to something about the EAF, it just need to be.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. So like, and then do you want to see, it would be, it would be probably an expansion of an existing use?
I think that's how it's made.
Yeah.
E, or F, rather, down further about the emissions and stuff, I think we look at that, um, um, site sources of fuel and combustion, you know, generation, and stuff, and usually, if they're constructing and stuff, well, and then, no, I know, but, um, with all the, it said bulk storage of fuel and all that, and then the next one is about pesticides and, um, maintenance material, is this gonna be served by the existing facility, so like, you're not gonna, are you gonna have fuel tanks and all that stuff there, or are you gonna base all your stuff out of your existing?
Yeah, that'll all be based out of existing.
Looking right next to it, I've heard that, I saw that, and then, are you really not gonna use any pesticide or insecticide on grass?
Um.
I mean, I guess that might be.
Well, if there are existing driving range tops, or whatever we go down, we will, we will.
That's something that, um, I look at. Personally, with, um, how these things tend to run off and affect water jets, especially right being supposed to be weapons and stuff, um, and how these things are mitigated in the runoff.
When, we're not, we won't be adding or changing anything that we're doing to the existing driving range, we're, we're utilizing that same driving, we're just beginning from the other.
Yeah, there's additional, you know, disturbance and lawn grading and all that kinda stuff, and then, that kinda has, leads me to the, um, the plans, and then, are you going to put back, is all the disturbed area gonna be seeded and mowed, or are you gonna put, like, work into some, like, meadow type plantings and, and this kinda stuff, it doesn't need to be mowed regularly, it doesn't require a lot of maintenance? It does a lot of, you know, it's, it's a lot more beneficial to a lot of the environmental factors, and you know, with some of these details, it's like, well, if it's two to one, we'll use riprap, but I can't imagine that. Couldn't figure it out.
Those are site plan, I mean, we have.
But it's like thinking of the, the, the look of it, the design of the whole thing. Is, is everything just gonna be mowed, or are you gonna? What are you gonna make it look like?
Haven't given that really much grasp, we really haven't given much consideration to.
Okay.
The point is that, you know, if it goes above our overall plan that we have now, we take the dynamic consideration a lot more closely. So, if you do have some things, an option, that you can reduce the amount of pesticides.
Yeah, I mean, I don't mind having those discussions, I'm just saying as far as this initial.
During your presentation, this is great, and I, I love, the point is, if you add to your presentation, take that into account, and you suggest that we do some things to, to help that, it could be helpful.
Just, yeah, I mean, there's a lot out there, and it, it ends up saving time and trouble a few years down the road, um, and it, and it does a lot, and I think we even refer to that kinda stuff in the comprehensive plan. Um, with the trash and recycling, um, to talk some, under here to disposal of salvage, are you gonna have all of that here at this facility, because you've got the kitchens and stuff?
Yeah, there's, on the site plan, there's a dumpster enclosure.
Okay, so that would, and then, um, I think that was really it, and then, as far as regular kinda questions, so, um, you know, just little stuff, that I think you're probably still working on, I appreciate that you came to us with such a well worked out plan. Um, it really makes it easy for us to, to picture a lot of the things you're hoping to do, and, um, one of the, I mean, we talked about, um, you, you might have heard this with the other applicant, but foundation or architectural colors, lighting samples, even just color photograph catalog type stuff, maybe actual.
We are proposing a, a sign upfront, so we'll be sure.
Sign, yeah, it's like the whole package of stuff, um, but also, yeah, the ability to sell them, what happens.
Yeah, and we've got, so, I mean, preliminarily, the way we have it right now is we do, um, we have the floor plans, we have elevations that have been done, um, there's still work to be done, I know, I think the color scheme, just generally, and we can talk about this, obviously, we'll be submitting some renderings, um, but I think right now, we're thinking gray with green trim, if I remember correctly.
Uh, blue, blue and green, yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah.
And that's another need to look to the comprehensive plan, too, there's, there, in the comprehensive plan, there's like least desirable, most desirable, from what the whole community project, um, resulted in, and so as far as even commercial buildings, like, what's more, you know, most desirable, least desirable, just to have some idea of what the town is looking for.
Well, you probably got maybe the street color scheme, so.
Yeah.
And your sort of structure, oh, right, um, the architectural, yeah, so, are, with the foundation, would you usually like to see a local building wall section and stuff? Foundation you put out here, because of the high bar table, with such a big.
I don't know, yeah. I don't do the foundation design.
Um, but like an insulated shallow frost protected type thing, you can't, are you gonna go down and, it's not gonna have a basement or anything like that?
It'd be, it'd be a slab, I'm not sure if they, if they're gonna do a frost protection, or just turn down haunch, I don't know.
Okay, I was just curious with the water, how will that work, because it's not like you can do water and pump it, you know? Um, with that whole thing, other things being so fully thought out, I was more just kinda curious, um, and then, with this stormwater stuff, um, I haven't looked at the swip or anything, and I'm assuming that, um, you know, you're gonna use this cascade contact product for, um, your pretreatment and.
Some of the pretreatment.
Yeah, and then swales and stuff for the rest, and
Yep.
are they going to engineer, um, the, um, anti-floak for this?
I think they have, I'll have to double check.
Okay.
So one of the guys in my office did the storm design on this one, but the why we went with that contact was because the site is so flat, we couldn't get it to grade to get to your bio retention area, you know, your standard.
There's only a couple that you would not have dropped, so.
But, we also, I also, when I go, I might just kinda let contact through the design, so.
Yeah, they do really drop, they're, they're, I was just curious.
We are also treating enhanced phosphorus, we're gonna have to do that here, so there's an extra twenty-five percent water log we can capture here, too.
It'd be a great opportunity to, um, introduce and almost create a wetland, treatment wise. I didn't look at the specifics and all that, nor did I look at the swip, honestly, yeah, I have not, I like paper, um, and.
I can get you a paper copy of this one.
I don't know, please, I have one.
I, I did print one hard copy, I gave it to Doug, I think Doug has it, yeah.
Um, I couldn't figure that out on my end, you don't have to do that, but it might be a really good opportunity to, um, utilize one of some of the more unusual, um, you know, treatment options for this kinda stuff, that create an aesthetic benefit, rather than just what's the smallest footprint, all the amount we can do, um, you know, there's a lot of of howl of those that can, you know, make it a benefit, and especially if you're looking at some outdoor recreation, you know, areas and stuff, too. To blur, you don't wanna be a little fish, I don't know, if you wanted to be outside and sitting and watching stuff, or if you've got the opportunity to do, maybe down road, um, more input type things, or if you're wanting to have that kinda stuff, you know, think about other long term things, and what you could set yourself up for, um, with your site, if you're digging it up and disturbing it all, um, what can you do to make it a bit brighter?
So you're talking about water, it's hot. So we gotta make it work, you know, I'm looking at, you've got, uh, eight, eight, sixteen, maybe? Sixteen, yeah.
Sixteen, no, sixteen, no, thirteen, well, thirty-two days, there you go, so, you got thirty-two days, you got a water, that's over twenty-four.
The active area, their kitchen is huge. Double check, and ones like men and women's room, and the size of them is now for the occupants.
Well, so the architect will determine that, and so will plumbing control around that county.
Yeah, I just say, it just seems to me, you gotta, maybe just, or have that.
Um, so it's one thing, sorry.
Who did your initial study to come up with this idea? How did you manage to get such a big place? Is there, you're taking on enormous capital investment, is there enough business out there to keep it growing?
I, I believe there is, yeah, there's, like I was saying, there's not another facility like this till, till you get to Cleveland, um, so I think we're gonna draw on some tourism, I think we're gonna draw from, you know, different uh, things that come to town, like conventions and stuff like that, um, as well as the locals, who are really, I mean, in the winter time. Yeah, it's just, we're gonna be the only, unless you wanna go do an indoor virtual, or an indoor simulator, um, we are gonna be the only option to be able to hit outside.
So how far is it, cause I, I think it's a fantastic, yeah, how, how far is it to serpents, how far is it to turning stones, I can see a lot of people moving cars, they, it goes on, turning stones.
Well, thirty minutes, they're, they're also building a hotel with, uh, um, Point Place, and, which is less than ten miles away.
Okay.
Um, so.
I think it's a, uh, I'm gonna, yeah.
I mean, so.
Quick, couple of quick questions, just to clarify, so the club room on the plans, is that the? Are you remembering?
No, the club room, that is for selling golf balls, that's gonna be inside, driving, drivers and stuff like that, we left it so we could lock it during the night, so there wasn't class.
No, you, you're not, I misspoke. I know where you're going with your comment, about the, the other room.
Oh, no, I just heard that, the room is, yeah.
Mm-hmm, I misspoke, that came off.
There, there, there isn't, there isn't an event room.
Oh.
We're using the, the bar area as our event space.
Yeah.
So the restaurant seating in the bar is.
Correct, yeah, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna like, you know, roll off areas for, for ours, so.
Okay, that's a very nice, so like.
I thought this, originally, was, was a non whole indoor golf, was, we were, we were gonna use that as a banquet room.
Oh.
But after doing some studies and going to different places, we decided to add the indoor golf, because it'll have another outlet for serpents, there's nothing to do in the winter time, so it ended up.
It's like food, it's not for teenagers, because.
It'll be mostly bar, chicken tenders, nachos, um, burgers, stuff like that, chicken wings.
Yeah, and then the parking that we're seeing on the, on the map here. Is that, is that, I know that's the existing map, I'm just kidding, um, is that gonna be, are you gonna do anything with the existing parking to?
That's a good question, and I forgot completely about that, and we're gonna bring that up now, I did talk to Doug about this, and he told me just to bring it up when I was in to see you guys, so, item number three, Jamie, sorry, is the existing parking. That wooded area just to the north?
Yeah.
John is hoping to clear that out and expand that parking area, and I think, I don't remember what Forest had on the survey for that, to add I, I forget how many parking stalls.
I don't remember.
A gravel surface, um, similar to what exists out there now, but that was something else at one point John was talking about doing. So I'm not quite sure, that's gonna be on, that is on that southerly.
So, they actually are.
What's that? No.
Existing use?
Yeah.
Existing need?
Correct.
Existing need.
Yeah.
So you need more parking for your existing shops?
Yes.
What about if you just actually strip it?
Uh, well, we, we did, we, we may have, but when we first, when we first went in there, we did stripe it, but we do, our, we're very busy.
You could easily fit, and I didn't do the math, you could do the math pretty quickly, if you were to put some fresh stone down and strike that, because people are parking anywhere they want.
You mean where the, where the grass is?
Your existing parking, you could make that so much more efficient.
What, what she's saying? What she's saying is when you look at like that.
What she's saying is when you look at like that.
It's not, right, but I was out one the other day and it was like a free for all and I think that in unasked for opinion, you could save yourself a lot of trouble by fixing what you have, you don't need to make it bigger necessarily right away, I think you could get a lot in there.
Um, it's, it's very
So it's rated over low.
We advise it's very busy, we we need more cars.
So they park all the way up to the woods and all that, not what?
Yeah, we, yeah, well, some of those trees are gone, I mean, we we removed some of those.
Um, I I'm looking at, I was just saying, I'm looking at something that's very
Yeah, so those trees aren't there, we removed those trees.
Yeah, that's cool.
So the aerial is beautiful, I'm not sure, just, there's, there's numbers, I'm just like
There's a few up here at the top.
Do you have that as a grass area now?
It's, yeah, grass area now, that we wanna, we wanna make that hard enough.
Yeah.
No, I I think that when you look at it, um I think you wanna be mindful of this
Yeah, definitely.
Probably not, not, it's not going to be permitted to go all the way to the road, that there's gonna be some sort of buffering or plantings or trees that would be required along the street.
Foundation?
So if you wanted to do that, Jamie, procedurally
Yeah.
How would, so obviously, we're coming back in with this mulling up the special use permit.
This is, yeah, this is, yeah, there, yeah.
Is this just site plan approval for something like that?
It sounds like people are generally in favor of work to move forward, you guys move forward, um and so, yeah, so we would need besides the comments that Doug texted and made, and we need um the architectural renderings and the elevations and materials and um and the site plan.
Yeah, I'm good with the marching orders as far as that's concerned, I'm talking about if we've got, so we've already decided that we're gonna take what was previously perceived as two special use permits, we're gonna just handle it all in one shot.
Like, were there two, two of these, so we could, we could
No, no, I'm saying this being the second one.
Okay.
And then updating, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, it's gonna be one.
The next year is up next year, right?
Yes. So the parking is potentially proposed for what we're talking about right now, to throw another wrench in the mix, is this something where we would just add another plan to this plan set and address it all in one shot, so the next time we come in, depict that proposal on it and just add it to this, got it?
You'd need to do all your stormwater and all that stuff too.
I understand, I'm just saying, we're, you know, in other words, yeah, we're not gonna do all this and then come back, what's that?
Making it one of their projects. Makes sense.
And if we're just gonna do the one special use permit and cover everything, then it makes sense.
Do it all at once construction wise, or would you done stage it, or phase it rather?
You're talking about the parking lot for the golfers?
Yeah, if you were to add, if you were to pave this out and do all your stormwater and lighting and all your, all that.
No paving, we're gonna do stone.
Okay, so you'd still need to use stormwater somewhere, and then would you do this like phase one and then the other phase two? That kind of thing, or would you do all the construction at once?
What? I'm sorry, I was
Yeah, I think we're gonna do the parking lot first just because we're in need of that and we would like to get that in use.
Yeah.
Um, the other instructions, obviously, we'll cover, but that's gonna take a lot, you know.
Does it will feel accurate or secret?
Okay.
Yeah, I know, but we have to update it anyway, so I don't really care.
So if that's really the phase one, phase two, we definitely, we would do the parking lot first, so if we want a dollar, phase one.
Does that change anything?
No, I just need to, it, I think when we see everything, right, and then we start talking about when's it gonna be built and you know, talking about things in this part, special use per conditions, we can do that.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you guys can, it's gonna take some time to get all this
Yeah, and I would
together and then
I think for something like, when I think of traditional phasing, I'm more thinking housing tracks, big commercial developments, to me, this is, from a stormwater perspective, one of the things D E C requires as a phasing plan, um but in this instance, I think that it's safe to just consider it one phase, just because it could really happen, well, no, but I mean, it could really happen all at once, you could have one crew overdoing
Yeah.
parking lot and it's gonna take two, three days to do that, and then
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to make it easy on you, but I, that's all the easier for our folks guys wants, so. Yeah, so it
I prefer complicated.
So I, yeah, I would say take that back, compare that to, it'll take some time nicely and you can how long, how long do you think you guys need? We don't have to, but we can, you can contact us too.
Next meeting. Well, because, I mean, realistically, so what I was hoping to accomplish tonight procedurally is oh yeah, that's right, you guys meet every week, don't you? Okay, I, it'll launch from now.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm thinking, cause you have we still have to get through seeker public hearing, so I was kind of gonna count back and make the referral, the two thirty-nine referral. There's no D O T stuff.
Uh, I would like to, um
It's a town.
At least I'm happy to send the referral, I'd like to have your this is gonna be important, it's an important part of the, the, the parking parts.
I can add that, I mean, realistically, I'm not something like this, by the end of the week, I can have that added and updated so to be able to make that referral.
To make the referral out.
Yeah. Cause I think that's got, that's due, I think Friday, right?
I think Friday, yeah.
Yeah.
So I have that line, I'll just get it done. Yep, and then that way we can get the public hearing open and closed and get that out of the way in the seeker.
Yes.
I know, I'm saying.
You did a lot of the other ahead of time stuff, like the aqua and all that, like
That's all done. Yeah, I think Doug just mentioned the D O T for the driveway cut, may, it's gonna maybe require.
It's on.
Town? Yeah, it's gonna over tour, so.
Yeah.
I already looked into that.
Is there an entrance?
There's not an entrance, we're we're gonna, there is going to be a new entrance required where this is. Um
I'm gonna over tour.
Hmm, yeah, up up at the building, there's a parking lot.
Yeah, there's, there's one there, but there.
Well, we'll get, we'll get the county comments that, um Yeah, and lighting.
Yeah, so I did, there is a lighting plan and I think inside and out, or
Yeah, you know why I made silly comments, yeah, so I really pay my respects to, so. Um, yeah.
Okay, so start working with the, start working with the sign folks, we'll have to get someone hired and make sure that we get that right.
Yep, I think the monument sign, and that's what we're thinking.
Building, I know Rod is real. He's gonna propose a light out at the road.
Did you get the netting is one of the things that I think
That is a comment, he sent me, yeah, so.
Fifty foot tall safety netting, like how that gets its job, do you use like poles?
Yes.
We don't hope for that.
They go ten feet underground, um I sent them a little something on there, I don't know.
I didn't wanna bring it in, cause I just didn't wanna show it tonight with a bunch of new stuff.
I think it might be helpful if possible, I know you said there's nothing else like this out to Cleveland, but there's even some just internet images that you can share with us just to show it, something like this, guys, like, yeah.
Yeah, I have an, I have an idea for a time.
And you can email that to Lisa and Lisa.
I saw one in Denver, I went through my phone.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're really amazing, yeah, and then they, like, we were just gonna make those access and they have a smaller one there that's almost similar to to what we're building, that that's an actual top off facility, but, so they are doing different sizes now. You were talking about, you know, the size and the ratio, um the top offs had ninety-nine days for the big cities, we're doing thirty-two, which is about a third.
How high was the machine?
Our machine is only gonna be fifty foot tall because we're, we're into a field, we don't really have anything that we need to protect, we're, we're trying to keep the balls in.
Oh, basically, there is, there is netting proposed outside of the, I can't believe I'm having to say this, but the second floor outside, there is safety netting to catch.
Yeah, 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 those are nice.
So people don't follow really.
People try and happy deal more one.
They only follow a little.
So nobody lost.
And then you, and this is just because I don't know a lot about it, but um you drag around with one of those things, you know, a ball.
Correct, yes. Okay.
One of those things.
Yeah, seeing them in our goal, of course, I don't know, and from now, we'll be telling about those two task now numbers, um because we're
Yeah, I admittedly got that wrong on the first one anyways, I'll just leave it there and add another one.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it adds to, um, the E A L and stuff, so that way, so Lisa sends it to us.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else from the board?
Um, getting a new member, there our, our president here remarked, or this way, we require the press release permit, we've done this, or there are these three documents, or maybe they've been submitted and you just, they'll have a certification, the information's true and accurate, the affidavit, then the execution of a payment treatment, do those things have they happened, are they going to come?
What, what do you need?
Uh, we need a special permit, section one five five twenty-seven, so let's make sure, arranging the record, we have everything, so we're not packing up or missing something.
It's this stuff, and Lisa takes care of it. The application, we should have that.
What, there is a show, you take your bag.
Okay. I'm just wondering.
Yeah. I actually don't know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's not this. Okay. Anybody else? All right.
So I get it, the plan updated. Enough. By Friday, adding the parking for the last piece of the puzzle, we can make the county referral at least, get that done, right?
Yeah, okay.
And the rest of it, we're just, what's that?
Yeah, five four.
Five four?
Yeah.
On Friday?
Yeah.
I'm not working past noon on Friday.
Yeah, I'd work past four thirty, that's why I said four.
And that's a submission deadline for our next meeting, like for the next next meeting, so next month would be the twenty-eighth, I think of March.
And I think Rod has the architectural drawings in really good shape, like, I mean, he's progressed them a lot since
Yep, and I just, oh, then we said it, it's
It's March twenty eighth.
Yeah, so
Two days after, oh, yes, yeah, so March twenty eighth, just to keep in mind, that'll be the next realistic deadline.
Okay.
Yeah, not just one day.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your suggestions, let's get all the We can't wait to see your house.
I'm gonna get someone else to come to the meeting for that.
All right, so we have, we have a lot of other business on our agenda, um so, um, everybody knows that Town More is inviting the training board members and the board members um to attend the following two nerve sessions, um so that we can hear more about upcoming events, certain and biocomms. So there was the only agenda and I think everybody got, um, the email from Lisa. So there's the Town More workshop on March twenty seventh, um inside of Akia for the discussion for the accessory dwelling unit legislation um to top up to the new construction, and then there's one on April tenth, twenty twenty-four at five P M. Um, at some point, legal analysis, um so the details are, um, there, but they are overriding all of that to probably publicly, it's
I'm also hoping to have paperwork regarding those, so you guys look for these.
Yeah, so you'll have the information, um
Okay, does anybody have any questions on those? What is it? I've never done one before. Never, so it might sound weird, it's new, a new session.
Oh, they said, yeah, the Town More, the code, and
Um, we just show up and we're talks about what they're, like, the A U D A D use, for example, they'll talk about it, and anybody have any comments, questions, big things, or it's just, just like a profession, like we did?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, this, I mean, if you remember, this came before us probably six months ago, where somebody wanted to build some cabins
Yeah, yes.
on their property, and it was not allowed by code. So they're trying to, they're looking at amending our code to allow the person to build some cabins.
Wait, so they're gonna change the code for what one percent wants to do?
Not necessarily, I don't think.
Uh, well, I think that's the question, it was like, it was, it was, that's kind of a yeah, so notice that.
It's been a little before.
But, so, that's the opportunity to say, if you do apps then this is what's gonna happen and why, right, so that's, that's all, so we
Then we will get eventually a certain review with more, but this gives us some
Modern, we have a code.
It opens the communication ahead of time. Um, and for those that have, you know, that I noticed in the Town, what is the Towns Bank, that you give us the tough topics, yes.
Yes, there's some stuff with you, and you're likely, and you can tell some past issues, um, and I can share them with new
new members who have had, passed on, but there is some stuff at accessory dwelling units in there as well, so maybe, um, take it with that. Um, okay, and then the other thing was the planning beyond our county, planning symposium is this on sick March thirteenth, and I know, I think everybody has signed up, uh, so we will see there and
Um, everybody gets, um, like, a certificate at the end. Let's sign off on it, just turn it in, so you can put your training hours in when you're all done. All right, any questions on that?
No.
Don't park in the rock garage. Yeah, there's this, this Yeah, we've got this, this interaction, yeah. Um, okay, I will
I'm making a motion to adjourn, say it.
Motion to adjourn, I already, I'm ready.